Good evening, everybody. Welcome to the October 8th meeting of the Falmouth Zoning Board of Appeals. Tonight, we have two continuations, three new public hearings, and then we will attend to some open meeting items. I'll start by introducing the board. To my right is the Vice Chairman, Ken Foreman. To my left is TJ Hari. He's the clerk of the board. Following him is Ed Van Kuren. He is a regular voting member. To his left is Paul Murphy. He's also a regular voting member. And as there's five of us present, and actually all full-time voting members, we'll all be sitting on every one of the hearings except for the continuations. I wasn't on the table. I wasn't here for that.
That's right.
Yeah, sorry. Suri Budro is our zoning administrator, and Rade Guychecker is our recording secretary. So what we will do, the clerk will read in, if the matter hasn't already been opened, he'll read in the public hearing announcement. Everyone attending the public hearing is asked to show respect and courtesy by silencing cell phones and other electronic devices now, listening to applicants, witnesses, and the board, refraining from private conversations in the hearing room or outside of the hearing room, refraining from making derogatory statements, and exiting the hearing room quietly. So as I said, the clerk will read in the public hearing notice. After the clerk reads the application into the record, we afford the applicant 15 minutes to present the project. The board will then have questions of the applicant, and following that, we will open it up to public comment, either in favor or objection. If we feel like we have enough information to make a decision tonight, we'll do that, and if not, we can always continue it as well. So TJ?
Excuse me, Madam Chair.
Yes?
You all can sit on the floor because there was no testimony.
Oh, my apologies. Thank you. Sorry. There we go. Thanks. Okay, so the first item is 7215.
Suri, I think I've already read the notice into the record. Is that right?
Yes, you have.
Okay. Madam Chair, there is a letter in the file requesting to continue the hearing to November 5th, 2015.
Okay. So maybe you want to make a motion to continue?
I'll make a motion.
Okay, so that's Mr. Van Kuren.
Second.
And Mr. Foreman second. So all those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Unanimous. The next item is number 7715, Battalaro, 49 Green Harbor Road, East Falmouth. It's also been opened.
It has. Suri, I've read the notice. Have I read the referrals into the record?
No, you did not.
I haven't.
Because he has to continue.
Okay.
Thank you.
All right, four referrals. Planning Board, no comment. Building Department, no comment. Fire Department says no issues. I think that's it.
Notice communication from the Board of Health in there. There was some discrepancies which Mr. Battalaro has met with David Kerrigan, and they have resolved it, and I believe I sent that to the board members.
Sure.
With a copy to the file. So all those issues have been resolved. He did a walkthrough through the premises.
Then I also see here that from Concom and RDA, application has been filed and approved with Concom for this proposal. All work with land subject to coastal storm flood zone A only, and that does it for referrals.
Thanks.
First of all, let me thank the Chair and the board for having my wife Susan. I appreciate it. As you know, we are requested to leave to add dorms and existing garage structure to the deck above and patio area as well as an indoor pool. This is the final phase of renovation that has gone on for quite a number of years. My wife and I bought the property about 18 years ago, and we're eventually moving full-time, so that's kind of something we're looking forward to. The work involved here is also to install a septic system to the front yard.
Excuse me, Mr. Battalaro. The TV just asked if you could speak into the microphone.
No problem.
You can carry that with you because they have to hear it out on TV.
No problem. Thank you. So the work involved also involves a septic system relocation that goes to the front yard, which has been approved already. With this renovation, we're still under lot coverage, so we're meeting that criteria. The current room that exists above this garage is about 591 square feet. My wife and I felt that the big impact here was to make this room look aesthetically pleasing, and it's dropping down to 295 square feet, which is about half the size, less than half the size. And it was more about the appearance of this one of those docks where it looked aesthetically pleasing. As you know, you looked at the Homes of McGrath site plan and the architectural plans, which were done by Doug Adino Associates, pretty much depict everything that's going on with the property. At that, at this point, I'm certainly happy to take any questions to the board. Certainly anything that's construction related or something.
Excuse me, Madam Chair.
Yes.
Mr. Battalaro, could you explain to the board what point you have to the room that is on the ground floor of the garage?
The ground floor of the garage? There was some question on that early on, the board at all, and there was an interpretation that there was an existing room that was built probably sometime in the '70s that was, could be construed a bedroom. What happens on the plan, and if you revise the plan, is it shows I want to get the entire garage to be a full two-car garage. Right now, the room makes it very difficult to fit a vehicle in there, so I want to open that back up, so a wide-open 24-by-26 room that can be used as a garage.
Let me see if anybody has any questions for you.
No, no questions. Thank you.
No, I don't have any.
TJ?
All right. The garage to be renovated, that would be the existing slab. There's no intention to create a basement or anything like that there?
No intention on that at all.
And the pre-existing nonconformity to the property, that would be the side setback to the garage. You want?
That's correct.
Okay.
Just quick photos here if you have to see the property. Not the little dock that morning, but you know, it does give you an idea of what the elevations look like. And as it shows, currently, this room exists end-to-end, and when you step in with these dorms, where the square footage gets reduced to that 295 square feet.
And with the proposed garage, is there going to be a change in height?
No, we have to maintain nothing greater than 18 feet.
Okay. Thank you.
Thank you. Ken?
So the pool is going where there's currently lawn. Is that the majority of the increase in lot coverage that you're?
That's correct.
And is the proposed patio that you're going to construct, is that similar in nature to the existing patio that's out there?
Yes. Yeah, the bluestone patio.
Right. Yeah. And then, yeah, you have a gravel parking area you're retaining?
Yes, and that does call out as well during this process for the shed to be removed off the property.
And not replaced?
And not replaced.
And so there's no, I think I read somewhere that there was proposal to build decking, but that's not?
In back of the garage.
Yeah, in the, on the building plans.
Well, behind the garage is the upper deck.
Over the pad, over the stone patio. Yep.
I see. It's an upper deck.
Yep.
But that counts in the lot coverage because it has an overhang.
Because it's a structure.
Yeah, correct. All right. Yeah, because I saw that beautiful patio, and I said, "God, I can't believe they're building a deck over this."
Yeah.
All right. Thanks.
Okay. Could you just describe to me, I guess, the use being made right now? So you said that there's, you're decreasing the second story of the garage, you said, about 50%?
About 50%.
So what's the use up there right now?
It was during the years where we were raising our kids on the property, they kind of used it as a rumpus room and a hangout. When we'd be out of the house, they'd be up in that room. It was a carpeted wall-to-wall room with couches and a television out there so that they could hang out. And now with, we've done a major renovation a couple of years ago on the house, and this has become more of a workshop area for my wife and I.
Okay, so when you say workshop?
Just place to be on the computer. I do a little woodworking and things like that, so it's very.
But not a bedroom?
Not a bedroom. Absolutely not.
Okay.
Nope. Not at all. There'll be no facilities there. There'll be, it'll be kind of bare bones.
Okay. Bikita?
Potentially.
Okay.
Yeah. If I do anything there, it'd be a.
This can be considered a bedroom because he's got the septic capacity, and that's what the whole issue was with the Board of Health. He does only have three bedrooms in the house, and this does meet the criteria of a bedroom.
Okay.
So there's no objections from the Board of Health, as long as that room on the ground floor of the garage is eliminated.
Okay. Thank you, Suri.
And what's the current bedroom count?
Current bedroom count on the property is three. The septic's designed for four. The existing septic, as well as the proposed, both designed for four.
Okay. Is everybody all set? Questions? Suri, you also? Okay. Let me see if there's any public comments. Anybody like to speak in favor of this project? Anybody like to speak in opposition to this project? No? Okay, so we'll have, even though we'll need board discussion, but we'll see what the board would like to do. Thank you.
Thank you.
How's everybody feeling? Any discussion or?
Happy with it.
Looks nice. I like it. It's professionally done, and it's a nice enhancement.
Ken?
Everything conforms.
Yeah, and there's no increase to the nonconformity.
He brought the garage into compliance with the one-and-a-half story, which it wasn't previously, so that's a big improvement as well.
Okay, so would anybody like to make a motion?
Make a motion.
Close. So that was us and TJ. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Are we still doing the findings before we?
Yeah.
Well, okay. I guess that's what we have to do.
So you can make the initial vote before you finalize it, do your findings and the conditions.
The findings first, yes. So findings first.
So no increase in nonconformities? In fact, improvement in terms of the height of the garage, right?
The size of it, one, basically, two stories going to one and a half almost. Not quite.
And septic adequate for a fourth bedroom if desired?
I don't know if you'd want to go there. I think you should just say the septic's adequate and no objection from the Board of Health based on a four-bedroom septic. Is that okay with you?
Removal of shed?
Not to be replaced. What's the lot coverage?
Thirty-seven, thirty-eight percent. They're pretty close.
Yeah, they are pretty close.
What about by structures? That's total.
Eighteen point six.
Eighteen point six.
As long as it doesn't, you can add a shed as long as it doesn't go over the lot coverage requirements, if that's what you want to put.
Well, that would be as a condition, but.
Put the burden on him.
Right, but in terms of findings, I think all we need to say is that.
Yeah. Shed removed.
And the finding that he's going to eliminate that room in the garage, and it will be used solely as a garage and/or storage on the main level, ground level?
Yeah, that's important.
Okay. And then.
So do you need a motion to approve?
Well, conditions? Per plans?
Yes, yes. Yeah.
Oh, findings 240-216.
And 240-dash-three. It means 240-dash-three.
Any other conditions besides, I guess, what we just discussed?
You didn't change any plans, so I would just say no more than four bedrooms on subject property.
Yes.
And to make sure that that room is eliminated, which is per plans, but.
Right.
The garage ground floor should be used strictly as garage and storage.
Yes.
Do you want that as a condition?
Sure.
Yes. Okay, so then we need a motion.
Make the motion.
Okay, so, to approve?
Close it, whatever.
No, we already, yeah, we already closed, but moving to approve.
I'll second.
Okay. So that was Ed and Ken. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. So unanimous. Congratulations. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Okay, next application is 80-215 Dominguez, 134 Carriage Shop Road, Lakewood. Being all persons deemed affected by the Board of Appeals under Section 11 of Chapter 40A of the Massachusetts General Laws, you hereby notify that Michael W. Dominguez of East Falmouth, Mass. applied to the Zoning Board of Appeals for a special permit pursuant to Section 240-38I to create an accessory apartment within the single-family dwelling on subject property known as 134 Carriage Shop Road, Lakewood, Mass. And for referrals, no comment from the fire department. Planning, no comment. Water, no comment. Health, property is currently listed as a four-bedroom dwelling in the assessors' record. There is an active permit on file in the health department to replace and upgrade the existing septic system to accommodate a fifth bedroom. The system has not been installed as of this date. No objections to project, provided the septic system is upgraded as planned, and the accessory apartment does not provide more than an additional fifth bedroom. That's what we have for referrals.
Okay. Thank you. Hi, Mike.
Madam Chairman, members of the board, my name is Michael Borselli from Falmouth Engineering, and I represent the applicant, Michael and Nancy Dominguez. The Dominguez's are in the audience tonight, and they have applied for an accessory apartment in accordance with your zoning bylaw at 240-38I. The current conditions on the property are that there's an existing single-family dwelling that was burnt, and it was burnt to a point where it is no longer habitable. If you've been to the site, I think that's pretty clear. In mid-July, it caught fire and is, needs to be replaced. The single-family dwelling is located on the property in the front yard, as shown on the site plan. It's actually nonconforming to a front yard setback. It's 15.2 feet off the road layout of Carriage Shop Road, but it's pre-existing nonconforming because the house was built in 1717. So I think it predates our zoning bylaw. In any event, that house that burnt is slated to be demolished, and it will be replaced with a new structure that is actually currently under construction, shown in this location. If you've been to the site, there's a foundation. And the applicant would like to take advantage of the bylaw and has applied for an accessory apartment. The current family that resided at the burned house was Michael and Nancy Dominguez. Their daughter and their granddaughter lived in the house. They're hopeful that this board can approve an accessory apartment in the new structure so that their daughter and grandson can live in the accessory apartment, which would be on the north end of the structure in this location. The current house has four bedrooms, has a substandard septic system. There'll be a new septic system as the referral indicates. It's designed to have a capacity for five bedrooms. However, there will only be four bedrooms in the house. There is one room that doesn't meet the definition of bedroom. It's a home office. However, just to take away any uncertainty and to provide added capacity, it's never a bad thing to have added capacity. It's been sized, so it has enough capacity for five bedrooms. The Dominguez's up prior to tonight went around and talked to their neighbors because they knew that they'd be notified as a butters, and they wanted them to explain to them what was proposed, so they went around to the director butters, and they went around to some other neighbors that were nearby, and they showed them the plans, and they actually prepared a, I guess what they call a petition, that is signed by all the neighbors, saying that they're in favor of the project, and I'd like to submit that just for the record. With a lot of assistance from Suri, the applicant designed this new house to meet the accessory apartment criteria, and I think that this qualifies under that criteria. And there's a criteria listed as follows. The principal or accessory unit must be owner-occupied for a period of not less than seven months in every calendar year. That's certainly going to be the case. The accessory unit must occupy no more than 30% of the floor area of the principal structure, and shall have a minimum floor area of 450 square feet and a maximum floor area of 750 square feet. It was designed to meet that criteria, and it's demonstrated on the architectural plans. And then number three says the minimum lot size for an accessory apartment shall be 1,500 square feet. The overall lot size of this lot is 57,753 square feet. The number of bedrooms on the lot shall not exceed four bedrooms for lots between 15,000 and 39,399, and five bedrooms for 40,000 square-foot lots up to 50,000 square foot, square-foot lots. And in fact, six bedrooms are allowed for lots in excess of 50, but there's only four proposed, so we meet that criteria. There's also a provision for properties within a coastal pond overlay district. This property is within the Child's River Coastal Pond Overlay District, and you're allowed one bedroom for every 13,500 square feet of lot area. If you do the math, that works out to 4.3 bedrooms, and there's only four proposed. And also, there were only four in the existing house. And then there are some other criteria that I won't bore you with, but everything, I believe, is in order. We worked through this with Suri, and I think it's an approvable request, and we're hopeful that you can see to it to grant us the permission. Happy to answer any questions.
Thank you. Ken?
So just for the record, can you give us the square footage of the principal and accessory apartments?
So the eighth. Oh, there it is. I didn't see it on the floor. If you look on the plan, Mr. Foreman.
Oh, okay. I do see it here.
Me too. Yeah, I, the first floor, living space, the second floor, living space are cited, and then the accessory apartment area is cited as 720 square feet.
Yeah, so 1,208, 1,508, and 720.
Perfect.
Okay. And then, I was curious as to the septic that's being constructed, the new septic, that's going to be rated for how many bedrooms?
It has a capacity for five, although there'll only be four bedrooms in the house.
Okay. And under the coastal pond overlay, 4.3 is the max. Is that correct?
Yes.
Okay.
If you do the math, one bedroom for every 13,500 square feet.
Now, there's another building on the site. I'm wondering if you can tell us a little about that.
That's a garage, strictly a garage for the operation that Mr. Dominguez owns. It has previous home occupation permitting through this board, if you look in the file. It's simply garage space. That's all it is.
Okay. Well, that, no bathroom facilities in there?
No, no. Correct. And there's no flow, there's no bathroom facilities, and there's no flow, it's assumed that accessory use is part of the primary use. It's like a detached garage.
And where the current house is, that's just going to be, they're going to just fill in the hole?
Probably fill in the hole and make it one. So they'll, they'll fill one of them.
Okay. I think.
No, no questions.
I have a question, but it's probably just for Suri. The condition of a special permit that there be a deed restriction, that would attach to this, even though right now they're intending on...
For family.
Family. But they would still have to...
According to the bylaw, they do have to. And I explained that to my children. I'd help them.
Right. Okay. I just wanted to confirm that. Okay. So that is all we have for questions. Is anyone here to speak in favor of this application? Oh, so I guess, oh, if you're going to speak, sir, if you could come up here and provide your name and your address and...
Hi, John Fidel. I would be in favor of this application. I'm on 179 Club Valley Drive. I know the family very well, and I think it'll be well-suited for them. Thank you.
Thank you.
Doug Islington, 144 Carriage Shop. It's my stepson. We need this little room for the little guy, so he can have a good place to live.
Would anyone else like to speak in favor? Would anyone like to speak in opposition? No? Okay, so let's see what the board would like to do.
I think it's a very thorough application, and I'm personally ready to move that we close.
Okay. So that is Mr. Foreman and Mr. Van Kuren. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
And I. And how would you like to proceed?
Well, if you want to start with findings.
Sure.
I think they've convincingly demonstrated that they've met all the criteria of 240-38I.
I agree.
And there will be substantial improvement in terms of the front yard setback. They'll be getting rid of that nonconformity which existed prior at 15.2 feet. So, I think it's a vast improvement.
Improved use for the family as well.
Absolutely.
The septic system is being upgraded, capacity for five bedrooms.
So that's another improvement. So, I'd be happy to vote...
It's 240-216.
I'd be happy to move in favor of approval.
Do we need any conditions?
Well, as per plans.
Per plans, and according to 240-38I, it's pretty much all you need.
Okay, so you'll...
I believe.
38I. You want to say something about section seven there?
No, if you just say 240-38I in its entirety.
That's sufficient.
But also, the board might want to make a finding that this property owner does have a home occupation existing.
I think that is, yeah, approved under home-based business.
And that's operating solely out of the garage, is that true?
And that's trucking transport.
Okay. So, conditions, we said, you'll work with the applicant for the deed restrictions, Suri, as you said?
Yes.
Okay.
Okay, so that's my motion.
Okay, so, Mr. Foreman, I believe it was Mr. Murphy, seconded that. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Good luck.
The next matter is 8315 Slapsus, I hope I'm pronouncing it correctly, 49 Naragansett Street, T-Ticket, Mass.
Being all persons deemed affected by the Board of Appeals, under section 11 of chapter 40A of the Massachusetts General Laws, you hereby notify that Richard M. Lynn Slapsus of Amherst, New Hampshire, applied to the zoning board of appeals for a special permit pursuant to section 240-3 of the Code of Falmouth to partially raise and reconstruct a portion of the pre-existing nonconforming single-family dwelling on subject property known as 49 Naragansett Street, T-Ticket, Mass. And for referrals, fire department, no comment. Planning board, no comment. Water department, applicant to coordinate any water service relocations with TPW Water at 416 Gifford Street. Building department, no comment. Concom, it's outside of Concom jurisdiction, but keep stormwater on property. And from the Health Department, no objection to the project, except if the foundation is to be replaced, the new foundation would not meet the 20-foot setback required to the existing leaching pit. The project would be required to have the Board of Health approval of that plan before the Health Department would sign off on the building permit. It is understood that the sewer under construction would eliminate the septic system, but unless the portion of the existing foundation within the 20 feet of the leaching pit remains, the Board of Health approval would be necessary. That's all we have for referrals.
Okay. Thank you.
Good evening. I'm Carol Lloyd, and this is my second time here, and more nervous now than the first. And I'm here with Richard Lynn tonight, yet again, a customer that is planning on making Falmouth their retirement place, and the house does not meet their needs as it is, and we'd like to upgrade it and add that second level, as Richard has an extensive library that he would like to bring with him, and we've had the drawings with CL2 out of Boston, and you all have copies of the drawings. And I think it's pretty straightforward what we're trying to do. We understand the lot's nonconforming. From what I understand, we do have neighborhood support, and that's about all we have over.
Okay. Let me see if anybody has any questions for you. Paul?
No questions, thanks.
Okay. TJ?
The pre-existing nonconformity, I believe, is the side setback. Are there any other nonconformities on the property? And can you address the Board of Health concerns?
Yes, we're planning on front approval here. We're going to move forward with taking care of everybody.
Excuse me, for clarification, the other nonconformity is lot coverage by structures. It's 29% exceeding the 20%.
And it's remaining 29%, is that what I saw? Okay.
Is there an existing shed on the property?
Yes.
Are there any plans to remove that as part of the proposed construction?
They were hoping not to, as to keep their lawn equipment.
Ken?
I'll ask TJ's question from before, which is the building height, which I don't see on the plan.
I did quick calculations, I believe it's 21.634.
21, about 22.
21.6.
Okay. So, and it's a, proposed as a three-bedroom?
Yes.
And it's currently...
Three-bedroom.
Three-bedroom. Okay. Okay, I think that's it for me.
Okay. What's the total lot coverage right now?
89 something.
39 for the total. That includes the infervias and the structures.
And so, we'll be, oh, sorry, I see it right here. And it's, so it's being maintained at 39%?
Yes.
They intend to keep the asphalt driveway?
It's currently a stone driveway.
Okay. Okay. No increase to the nonconformity setback on the side?
No.
Okay. Suri?
Are they totally going to raise this portion of the house and reconstruct it?
Yes.
So half of this house is going to be totally removed and then rebuilt as a two-story?
Yes.
And those setbacks in the deck, everything is going to remain as shown on the plan?
Absolutely.
I guess I could ask, will they retain the existing foundation, or will they lay a new foundation of the same dimensions?
It's going to be exactly the same size, totally new floor basement.
Okay.
On the right side of the property. The existing one-story to the left is going to, that foundation is going to stay and we're going to per-code marry into it and keep that the way it is.
So there is a existing basement?
Yes. It's, I really don't know what terminology is for the basement. It's, the perimeter walls are nonconforming now, and it's got a block wall inside that somewhere through...
Nonconforming with respect to the building codes? Or with...
I don't really know that answer. It's, it was there when they bought the house, and that's the way they bought it. So, the section of the house, we're making two stories, we're taking that completely off, making a per-code foundation and basement, with a set of stairs going to that section. And we'll meet the elevation that's on the other side that we're not taking apart.
Gotcha.
And upgrading that.
So the basement use would be unfinished?
Unfinished basement.
Storage?
Yes.
Thank you.
On the plan, there's, or on the plot plan, there's a little box. That's an X or...
That's the chimney?
That's the chimney. Oh, okay. That's, and that would be even closer than five foot four then.
Yes, sir.
And that will be retained?
That section of the house is just going to get a new roof.
Okay.
Additional. We're changing that roof line through interior cathedral ceiling, but the walls are...
Right, I noticed that.
The walls are remaining. Fireplace is remaining.
Okay.
One second.
Mm-hmm.
Okay. Any other questions? See, would anybody like to speak in favor? Would anybody like to speak in opposition? Okay. See what the board would like to do. How's everybody feeling?
I don't have any discussion.
Do you want to discuss? Are you feeling...
Well, I don't think there's any more information that we need.
No.
Or can get. So...
Okay, so, Ed, you moved to close. Is there a second?
Sure.
Okay, so that's Ed and Ken. All those in favor?
Aye.
Okay. You want to have any discussion, or are you...
Discussion?
Do you want to start?
I mean, I think basically it's approvable. I wish the lot coverage was a little less. I do, I think, I'm guessing what Suri was hinting at is if we're rebuilding the foundation, we might want an as-built at the end.
I just wanted the board to understand that that was going to be totally raised and reconstructed. The portion that's not going to be raised is remaining the same, so it doesn't affect...
Right, and that's the part that's close, apparently closest to the lot line. That's where the nonconformity is.
I think the board still might want to discuss an as-built as far as lot coverage.
Right.
And is the bulkhead...
I mean, there's a number of things where the lot coverage...
Is the bulkhead going to remain since they're creating stairs in the basement? Did anybody ask that? I forgot.
Well, it's shown on the plan. I'm assuming it's remaining. And then, you know, I'm just looking, there's a patio, let's see, the patio doesn't contribute to the lot coverage, right?
That's the total.
Well, total, and they're tight on total, too. They're at 39.
But they're conforming.
Conforming.
I mean, the easiest thing would be the shed. There's a deck in the back.
But there's no, the shed's existing, and there's no garage, so I can understand the need to have some storage. It is a tight lot.
Very tight lot.
And I do, I think it's actually an attractive plan because they're, you know, adding a second story, but it's on the side, you know, on the side that's in the middle. It's not right on the property line, which I think is smart design, and it's not, sometimes we see boxes come in before us, and it's not a box, so it's attractive. I don't like those boxes. So, it is, it is tight on that side, but it's not changing.
Well, that was my only concern, is whether there's any way to reduce the...
Coverage.
The coverage a little, but, but it is, compared to some we've seen, it's modest.
Yeah. I think it's, you know, the alteration's conforming.
It's going to improve the neighborhood.
You'll have to, you know, obviously, you'll have to satisfy the Board of Health with that 20-foot requirement, but there's a lot of ways to achieve that.
Yeah, you can work that out before you get the building.
Sure.
Okay. So how would you like to proceed?
Have we moved to findings? Yet, no?
You can.
Yeah, we can.
Motion to close the public hearing and move to findings?
Very close.
We did that.
So, findings?
Second.
So findings, right? We're on to findings.
Not more detriment under 240-38.
Yes.
Improvement to the enhancement of the utilization for the residents?
Yes.
No increase in bedrooms?
Lot coverage remaining the same.
And that the applicant will work with the Board of Health to bring the proposed septic upgrade into compliance?
Well, that would be a condition, too, wouldn't it?
Well, it goes without saying, because they won't sign off on the building unless it's correct, so...
And condition at the, well, per plan, and condition that there's an as-built plan provided as well?
Post-construction, please, for lot coverage verification?
Yes. There was no increase in bedrooms. Maybe a finding that the height is not increasing on the side, where the side yard setback is?
With the...
The height is not increasing?
There's no increase...
No increase in...
No change in that?
In the structure at that point.
Right. Thank you. Okay, so I think that's everything, right, Suri? Okay. So now a motion to approve. Anyone?
Motion to approve. Second.
Okay, so we'll say that that is Paul, and then Ed. All those in favor?
Aye.
Unanimous. Thank you, Mr. Lynn.
And condition that there's an as-built plan provided as well?
Post-construction, please. For a lot coverage verification?
Yes.
And let's see, there's no increase in bedrooms. Three bedrooms.
Maybe finding that the height is not increasing on the side, where the side yard setback is?
With the?
The height is not increasing?
There's no increase.
No increase in?
No change in that?
In the structure at that point.
Right. Okay, so I think that's everything, right, Ceri? I think you got it, okay. So now a motion to approve, anyone?
Motion to approve.
Okay. Okay, so we'll say that that is Paul and then Ed. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Unanimous. Thank you, Mr. Wilson.
Are you reminiscing about the days you used to be on this board?
All nine is. And always. Are we next?
You are next after we read the agenda.
Okay, so next item is eighty-four fifteen, geez, Demace? Demace? One hundred C Tucket Road, East Falmouth.
Being all persons deemed affected by the Board of Appeals under Section eleven of Chapter forty A of the Massachusetts General Laws, you are hereby notified that Teresa J. Demace, trustee of Wolfall, Mass., applied to the zoning board of appeals for a special permit pursuant to Sections two forty-three and two forty-sixty-nine E of the Code of Falmouth to construct a two-car garage to be attached to the pre-existing nonconforming single-family dwelling on subject property known as one hundred C Tucket Road, East Falmouth, Mass. For referrals, planning board no comment, fire department no comment, building department no comment. Concom, it's outside of Concom jurisdiction, but keeps stormwater on property off the road, so no impacts. From engineering, it looks to be the standard comment. And from the health department, the garage is proposed to be less than the minimum ten foot setback required to the septic tank and the soil absorption system. Board of Health, variance required. Be the health department to sign off on a building permit for this project. It appears that the storage above the garage will be accessible only from a pull-down stair, so this room would not be considered a possible bedroom. Does it for referrals?
Thank you.
Just for the record, I received the notice because I have a house within a three-hundred-foot limit, but I don't know these people, I never met them.
Where are you?
Pheasant Lane on the other side.
Oh, you're on the other side.
And I can't even see the house from there, so I have no.
He just disclosed that.
Okay. And everyone's okay with him sitting and?
Makes them all the more qualified.
Thank you.
Good evening, Madam Chairman, Board members. My name is John Bydel and I represent Teresa Demace from one hundred C Tucket Avenue. I've just got some calculations here I did for the board. Let me just pass.
Give up to the clerk and we'll stamp the name. Thank you.
You want to keep one for yourself?
I have one, I have one, thank you. Basically, the existing structure is pre-existing nonconforming due to the front yard setback. I do believe that this board has a purview because we are nonconforming to allow some additional lot coverage, up to twenty-five percent, I believe. Anyways, we'd like to go over the lot coverage by two hundred square feet. As far as the referral from the health department, I did sit down with David Carrigan and we were confident that we could design a system that would fit all the setbacks with the new garage. So the system has to be moved from its present location. And he was pretty confident we could get it in there without a variance. So I don't know, I know he said we would have to have a variance in here, but I'd have to address that. If in fact you would permit this, obviously we'd have to meet the Board of Health's questions and to get a building permit as well. I do have several abutters that have signed a letter here from the, for the homeowner in favor of this. Am I going to listen to the board?
Yes, please, thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Let's see, is there anything else, any questions?
Let's see. Paul?
Yeah, so the nonconformities of the front stairs?
Yes.
Okay, so.
I know, kind of.
That was all, yeah.
Okay. Ed?
No, I don't have any.
The shed as well. The shed is also nonconforming in its setback.
TJ?
Just to address the shed, the existing shed, it is nonconforming. Any plans to tear it down or keep it?
We hadn't really discussed that. I think they just keep lawn equipment in it right now. There might be a chance of, you build a garage, maybe you'll get rid of the shed. Is that?
If I had to, I would, if I had to, I would prefer nonconforming.
If you're, if you're going to speak, I'm sorry, you have to.
All right, so I'll speak for, if in fact it became an issue and this was permitted, I think we could remove the shed. And being nonconforming as far as setback, we could even move it to meet setback if need be.
It would be a half a foot, basically.
Yeah. Six inches.
You don't have to.
Okay, thanks.
And the proposed garage, that will be a slab, no basement involved or?
No basement, slab.
All right.
Four feet of foundation, you know.
Just to confirm with the Board of Health's referral, lack of a better term, that second floor being created above the garage that will be?
Just, just storage. That's all.
And the only access is that pull-down there?
You can't, can't access from the house because it's going to have a cathedral ceiling and they tie it into the house to the garage.
Thank you, TJ. Ken?
This was, the shed's about a hundred and twenty-seven square feet.
Yeah.
And you said you're going two hundred square feet over.
We're two hundred square feet over, Ken.
Shed's a hundred and twenty-seven?
I don't think so, is it?
It's eighty, eighty-one and a half square feet.
Yeah.
Maybe I'm, maybe my multiple, multipliers.
I think it's eight by ten.
It's eight, it says eight feet three and?
Yeah.
Ten point two.
By fifteen.
Yeah.
Oh, fifteen-four is the, I'm sorry.
Is the setback.
Is the setback.
That's the setback.
That's what I did wrong. Okay. Yeah, okay, so, so that only really gets rid of about half your non, your overage. And the question regarding access to the, to the attic has already been addressed a couple times, so I really.
Yeah, it's not, it's not going to be a finished space up there.
Right. Is that, that's also unheated?
Correct. Unfinished, unheated. The garage won't be heated.
Garage will not be heated. Okay. Yeah. I really don't have any other questions. I thought it was pretty straightforward, nicely staked.
Thank you.
I don't have any questions. Ceri?
I have no questions.
Okay. Anyone here to speak in favor?
Of course.
Is anyone here to speak in opposition? That's an easy one, too.
No, I want to retire. That's why I wanted to try.
Um. Okay, so let's see how the board would like to proceed.
Move to findings? Close the public hearing, move to findings?
So move, so move to close, Paul?
Move to close.
Okay.
Well, actually, let's have a minute of discussion because it is an increase in lot coverage above twenty percent and we usually require, you know, comparable, what are the, what are the adjoining or nearby properties? Is it in character with the neighborhood and so forth? In my visit, I certainly didn't feel that the addition of the garage was going to make it out of character, it was a fairly mild.
You saw the list I proposed there, I mean, that I put together, it was, it was almost split in half between people that didn't have garages and people that had garages. There were like nine.
Right.
Houses on the street with garages.
But only two of them exceed twenty percent.
Right.
Ninety-four, which apparently is next door.
Next door.
And eighty-seven, the others are actually quite, be well below that. To me, the biggest thing was in terms of bulk, which we have sometimes also considered, this is really not adding a whole lot of bulk to the structure.
And this, this structure won't be more than twenty-two feet in height.
Right. So that, for that reason, you know, I just think, you know, we ought to get that on the record in terms of discussion that for that reason, at least I feel it's approvable.
How do you feel about the shed?
Well, the best, I mean, a compromise might be, how movable is the shed?
Oh, anything could be moved. To move it six inches?
It would have to be, what's the, what's the?
It's a three-foot setback for a shed that size. It's two and a half now.
Right.
I think what Kimberly was asking you is keep it or make them remove it.
No, I understand, I'm just looking for, you know, how can we? It would enable us to say that there's an improvement in some nonconformity, which would be nice.
Or it would be less increased, basically.
Yeah. But I don't feel real strongly about it. Personally.
Six inches, I'd say leave it.
Exactly.
It's not going to impact the septic system.
No.
Because it's on bricks, correct?
What's, the shed?
The shed, yeah.
Yeah. I mean, even the garage is, it's a slab, you know. But they still, we still have to maintain setback on the garage. And like I said, I did sit down with David and we kind of mapped it out and he was confident we could get a septic system in there without a variance. But I'll, I'll address that with him. The other thing is the property line is pretty well treed to the abutment, you know? I mean, it's really buffed very well, the back and the, and the side. Where the shed is, is.
Right. So anyway, that's, that's my feeling.
Okay, so how's everybody else feeling?
I see local.
Okay. All right, so.
So now a motion to close?
Yeah, so Paul had made a motion and I believe Ed seconded it.
Yes.
So all those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Unanimous. So some findings and conditions.
I think you need to address the two forty-sixty-nine and the fact that you found that there's no huge impact on the neighborhood with the bulk.
Right. And that there are two properties that are in excess.
So two forty-sixty-nine E, I can do that whole thing with impact and shadowing the whole bit, I can.
Okay.
I'll do that.
And we can say there's two properties, including one next door, that are in excess of twenty percent lot coverage.
Reviewed neighborhood.
Out of one, two, three, four, five, six, seven, eight, nine, ten, so.
The dimensional requirements of the bylaw are met for the proposed alteration or addition?
The space above the garage is unfinished storage?
And unheated, apparently.
Unheated, accessible only from the garage?
So second floor hatch access for storage only?
Mm-hmm.
No habitable space, that's it?
Right.
Okay, so.
No, my, my code.
Oh, we, we closed the public hearing.
Well, I just wanted, just wanted to clarify one thing, but that's okay.
I think we're gonna, I'm happy to make the motion to approve.
Well, to be, conditions?
Are we, but?
Well, per plan.
Yeah, but it's part of the motion, then the conditions. The findings come first, right? Okay.
Didn't we always do findings and then conditions?
Findings, then motion, then conditions.
Isn't that what we've done forever?
No.
That's our new, I'm just, okay.
So we do findings.
And then we do the?
You guys have changed it, so now you do findings and then make the vote before you finish the vote, yes.
Now, I understand.
Okay.
Thank you, Ken.
So. Anyway.
Sorry.
Now I forgot.
I know, I.
What am I supposed to be doing?
Um.
Motion to approve?
Grant it, grant it, second it, and then do conditions.
Motion to approve.
Second.
Okay. And then conditions would be as per plan. I mean, we could say the garage should remain unheated. That was a finding.
Okay.
Oh, you said? I don't know. We made findings with respect to lot coverage, but I don't think there's any condition associated with that, right? So.
Because it's per plans. Lot coverage is on the plans.
So I can't think of any other conditions.
I think one of the other findings, which I forgot, is the applicant will work with the Board of Health to satisfy prior to issuance of building permit.
Okay.
Appropriate setbacks for septic.
Will work with the Board of Health for, yeah. I mean, because if they get a variance, that's up to them. So appropriate setbacks may not be what you want to discuss, just the fact that they'll work it out with Board of Health prior to building permit issuance.
I mean, I guess another finding is there is no increase in bedrooms. We sometimes include that.
Right.
Okay.
But in terms of conditions, I think as per plans and?
No heat.
And no heat.
And we'll leave the shed where it is.
Yes.
Just to make that clear. Everybody's comfortable with that?
Yeah.
Except it just seems a little much to have them trying them. Okay, so that was Mr. Foreman and Mr. Van Kuren. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Unanimous.
Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Good luck.
Good night.
Good night.
I just have a question. If there wasn't a lot, if there wasn't a lot coverage issue, the fact that the front steps made that property nonconforming would automatically refer to the Board of Appeals?
Of course.
No town, that's interesting. In Dartmouth, that's approvable out of my office, as well as all the other towns I've worked in, but.
Not main, not on the vineyard.
No.
You have to go to the CBA as well.
Any, any house that's nonconforming has to go, even if the alteration complies?
Unless, and we have a bylaw, two forty-three E, if the property's over twenty thousand square feet.
You don't have to go.
And the alteration doesn't impact any of the setbacks.
I got you. Okay.
So there are exemptions.
Yeah, yeah. It's, it's interesting.
And of course, no interior work comes before us.
Right.
Okay, so open meeting. Minutes, September twenty-fourth? Did everybody have a chance to review those?
Yes.
Ken, are you here?
I'm trying to remember.
I wasn't here, so I'm not.
Neither one of you were here.
Voted.
Yeah, I don't think I was here.
So three can carry?
Okay. So is there a motion to approve?
Motion to approve for minutes of October sixth as written.
Second.
September twenty-fourth.
Oh, I'm sorry, September twenty-fourth, I was looking at the wrong date there.
Okay. It was Ed seconded.
Yeah.
And TJ made the motion. So all those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
I abstain.
And I abstain.
Next was the board workshop.
You guys filled out your stuff. I'm just, just a reminder to please be there at nine o'clock.
Thank you.
A week from this coming Saturday. And any topics that you want to discuss, like I'm going to post the agenda and it's just going to be, you guys are going to review the policy. You're going to have discussion on board concerns. So anything else that you want on the agenda?
Well, I think this upcoming bylaw proposal. Well, I think this upcoming bylaw proposal, can we talk about that? Is this posted?
It is posted.
It will be posted, it is a workshop, so...
But that would be pertaining to the planning boards.
That you can talk about at an open meeting after a hearing, if you'd like.
I think we should have a discussion about that.
Which one are you speaking of, the ones that are on the warrant?
Yes, I think, the ones that we just, you and I talked about the other day.
The accessory apartment is not on, that will be, they're working on it towards the spring town meeting.
Well, so that's better than, because we have an opportunity to chime in before it's all set in stone.
Exactly, exactly.
Is the, so the dimensional regulations, the height, that is on?
Pardon me?
The increase of height and the flood.
Yes, for the velocity and AE, yes.
That helps people.
And that would be as of right?
But you gotta remember, if they're nonconforming in any other way.
Yeah.
Right.
I just think 40 feet as of right, it's like, I think, and I made this recommendation at the time, I thought by special permit would be, like we do for lot coverage, to go from 20 to 25 percent, because 40 feet is...
That's like a four-story building.
That's high, right. And I understand the purpose, but...
Right, and the thing is, if you're living in a ranch and most of these are gonna go to two or two and a half story, that's a huge change, but this is something, and Mr. Foreman is your town meeting member, so it's something that he can discuss at town meeting when it comes up.
Yeah, I think 40 feet as of right is...
We used to have four members that were town meeting members on this board, I believe Ken is the only one now, right?
David, Matt, and Patty, was Patty as well? Okay. So we will or we will not discuss, is that...
No, I think we should discuss these things.
Oh, you definitely should discuss them, but I really believe it would be more advantageous to be at an open meeting and not at your workshop.
Okay.
Workshop is for the board only, you know, policies, process, for you guys to discuss.
Mark is not gonna be there? Is Mark gonna be there?
I think Mark is going to be here.
Okay.
Where's my, yes, he'll be back.
So you'd like, you know, this put on an agenda?
Well, this is coming up November 7th.
Right.
And those have already had public hearings.
Right.
I mean, these are going.
Right.
So Sarie, what else? Expectations in terms of preparation for the meetings?
Right, right, anything, you know, that the board wants to bring up.
Well, I think that would be a...
We've talked about posturing, we've talked about a lot of different things at the workshops, and sitting back and, you know, you need to be near your microphones, any, anything that I get from...
Making me self-conscious.
Anything I get from the public, anything a board member wants to bring up as a personal change.
Anyway, I think that would be good, to talk about, you know, what's anticipated in terms of preparation for the meetings.
Exactly, exactly, that's huge.
I'm recommending that we put that on.
That's huge.
I mean, you can't always do what you're supposed to do, but you ought to do it as much as possible.
Yeah, definitely, so preparation.
And you said you have procedure, right?
Well, I'll send you guys the policies and procedures and you should review them and see if you want to make any changes on those, and if there's anything, Ed just went to a 40B seminar that I sent to all of you, you all had the option to go to it, we do have a 40B, as you'll see, November 5th.
Oh, we do.
November 5th, it's on the agenda, you know? Anything like that, if you guys are interested.
How large is that?
Remember the thing that Brian Currie spoke about, any classes that you want, either in conjunction with planning board, we need to discuss that as well.
And I thought the last class that we had was a little long, but I did think we were, I mean, it was helpful, there were a few things where we said, ooh, we're doing this.
Was helpful to me at one point, that's for sure.
The hundred days and the, yeah.
Something I've been doing a great for a while.
I've already forgotten it all, but it was very helpful at the time.
It was helpful, so we can talk about that.
So and there's that list of things that Brian Ed gave me that I sent to you, and if there's any other training sessions, I think it's important that you discuss them and we get them done while I have the money in my budget.
Okay, so let's put that on the agenda too, so we don't forget.
So training sessions.
Sit, pull over.
Speak?
Yeah.
What else do we have? A bylaw review update?
Basically, we just already went through that, and that's, I mean, you guys really need to read the proposed accessory apartment that will be...
Yeah, but this is the idea of a comprehensive bylaw review, which they voted...
Oh, excuse me, you're right, I apologize.
Which we voted, town meeting voted money for, but it hasn't been done, right?
Nope.
And it's still stagnant at this point? But it wasn't, we mapped the plan...
That's not my word.
Well, no, I know, that's my word, because it is stagnant.
So, one thing that we could do, there is an opportunity in the town meeting for boards to get up and make a little report.
Right.
Okay.
And the chair could get up and say, I'd just like to make a little report on the activities of the zoning board, and we've done this, this, and this, and we are concerned that this has not transpired, and town meeting, you voted this money for this purpose.
What year was that vote in, sorry?
That's a good question, a couple years ago.
2013, I believe it was, wasn't it?
Yeah, I think so.
At the spring town meet, or fall town meeting.
How long is that set aside for, in perpetuity? Is that just, or is there a...
The thing is, the town has a discretion to change it, I mean, I've had funds taken away and different things, so...
Right, but there was a sense that it was needed, and I think it's still needed, and, you know, so that would be another, it's still needed, you know? You know, the other issue that has come up from time to time, and this is more of a planning board issue, but it does impact zoning as well as, a lot of what planning does is react to bylaw, making bylaw changes, rather than recommending actual land use planning, if you will.
Which is weird, don't you find, since they're the planning board?
Well, I think it's just been the traditional mission and it's hard for them to get out of that mode.
It is, exactly, and that's what a couple of them have said.
What occurs to me is, when I was on the planning board, you know, we passed the East Main Street redevelopment overlay district.
Business redevelopment, yeah.
Right, which included some things like, you know, going from six to eight residential units per acre as a possible inducement, and mixed use, of course, all good changes, but they were all changes that led to increased density, and part of the plan, which was never incorporated except by sort of general assent of the Board of Selectmen, was that we also set aside some land for off-street parking and some land for green space along that stretch, and certainly there are lots since then that have come up for sale, now that would be expensive, but it was part of the original plan, conceptually, and I think that the goal was to make East Main Street pedestrian-friendly, much like the, you know, downtown portion of Main Street, where you have all these nice park areas and so forth, and I think it could be, I think it would be an investment that would pay off.
I think that's something that you guys need to request a joint meeting with the planning board and discuss, most definitely.
So that's the East Main Street?
Redevelopment, and the idea of saying as part of that, we also believe there ought to be an attempt to, you know, acquire some land for municipal purposes, off-street parking, green space, you know, possible greenway to the harbor, you know, there could be, it could be great, but it would require a different way of looking at planning from just bylaw changes.
Do you agree that that would be something that you would want to discuss at a joint meeting with the planning board?
Yeah, and then I think from there, the point is to...
Because last year we had our joint meeting, like, I think in January, which would be really good.
From there, the goal would be to say, okay, planning board, now how do we, as you, you know, together, press for this, probably with the selectmen?
Yeah.
Or the, I don't know if it could be some part of a Community Preservation Act initiative, you know, recreations, green space.
I think it's important to discuss with them, and you could also have on that agenda the language that you've seen recently, that they're going to be discussing for the spring town meeting, I think it's important that you discuss those with them.
Are there minutes from the meeting of that one in January last year, the one you referred to?
There are, I just gotta figure out if it was January or February, I can't remember, I apologize. We matched with the selectmen as well, didn't we, Ken?
Was it this past year you were referring? No, the selectmen were, at the one that I've gone to.
Okay, it was just the planning board?
It was just the planning board, yeah, and that focused more, well, focused, I guess, on this bylaw recodification, and I think my concern with the bylaw recodification is the fact that we have all of these legal decisions and legal, you know, courts making decisions, and we need to make sure that all of our bylaws are in accordance with those, and I think that's something that sometimes gets overlooked when you're just dealing with one at a time.
That was one of the major reasons for getting the bylaw review done, it's not just recodifying the bylaws.
Right.
So, which is kind of gone by the wayside.
Right.
So the hope was to get a qualified legal mind to focus on it.
It hasn't happened.
When the planning board, you know, proposes some of these zoning articles, why aren't we, I mean, I know that...
We are free to go to the hearings.
We don't know about, I didn't know about some of these at all.
Because I think it would be good, and I think it would be good for the planning board too, and it would, because we offer a different perspective, just like they offer a different perspective from us.
Correct.
And so we look at it and say, well, ooh, this might be difficult for us to, to, you know, to make people comply with, or, right, so, I mean, I don't know if there's anything that can be done to make that better, so that we're working more collaboratively.
Again, I think that's something, most definitely, to bring up at this meeting. The communication on any zoning changes is, you know...
It'd be interesting to know how this...
I only find out sometimes when I watch the planning board.
It'd be interesting to know how this flood plane bylaw came to the attention of the planning board.
Me. I discussed it with Eladio, because this board was gonna be faced with a lot of variances, and this is being forced on them by federal regulations. So I met with Eladio and I asked Eladio, how can we do something about it, and he said, let's talk to the planning board. Well, Eladio sat down and talked with Brian, Brian took it to the planning board, and this is what they came up with.
But you know, the trouble with it is that it rides...
So that was something that we didn't have any input.
It rides roughshod over the rights of the abutters, who have vistas and views.
Which is one of our criteria.
I thought I'd be part of that conversation, but it didn't happen that way, but you guys, it's kind of moot at this point unless you talk about it at town meeting.
Well, I will.
You know, there's really a larger issue here, which is, is it such a good idea to be building in these very vulnerable flood zone areas in the face of sea level rise, increasing storm intensities?
Well, you know, I think that's something that would have been interesting to sit with conservation, planning, building, and CBA.
A truly integrated approach, wouldn't that be novel? That could be, actually...
Again, I didn't say that.
That's probably a better topic, well, not a better, but an additional topic that you might, we might cover in a joint meeting with the planning board.
With the planning board.
Because to me, this bylaw is exactly the wrong thing to do, I mean, I know that I feel some sympathy for landowners that have homes in these areas, but I feel like the message that you're getting is, maybe you shouldn't be building a real big house right next to where there's gonna be major flooding.
And eventually, it will change the whole character of the neighborhood.
Do you realize that some of the elevations go up to 22 feet? So if you're allowed a 40-foot height, hello, do you realize that all that house is gonna be?
Six stories both, yeah.
Did anybody take notes on what we're going to discuss with the planning board?
Yes, I think, I feel like the chair is doing that.
Thank you.
I, you know, and I also thank for this speaking at town meeting, I'll draft a letter, maybe I'll do the first draft and I can circulate it to everyone, because if I speak kind of just at will, I won't say everything, and I'll, it'll probably be personal too. So I think it would be better to, if I draft a letter, and that way we can work on it collaboratively.
You should have a statement.
But the way I'm reading this, though, is that the 40 feet is subtracted from the base flood elevation, so if you have a base flood elevation of 20, you're gonna, you're capped at 40, so you count the 20, no? Well, it depends on, I guess it depends on where the base flood elevation is, but...
So is maximum building height 40 feet above, or is this just on...
From main grade, unless they're changing that.
Yeah.
That's the thing.
Four, yeah, this means, correct, this means, the way I'm reading this is, this is 40 feet from grade.
Right.
From grade.
And right now, it's 35 feet.
Right. So I guess the school of thought is that, you know, the flood zone properties get penalized because they've got to set their lowest floor.
Well, they do, that's true, but...
Oh, yeah, no, I...
But, you know, that's kind of the price, I mean, in my view, that's the price you pay for being in the flood zone.
That's right.
And maybe it's not so good to be in the flood zone.
No, no, I definitely follow the logic, right, flood zone properties are what we call problem properties, there's conservation violence.
But let's not encourage them by giving them all kinds of extra leeway, that's where...
It just seems absurd, it's as of right, that's what is troubling. I think if there's a particular design, and it's because a lot of these are so close together as it is, too.
And you could say, well, here's one, and right next to it, there's one that's, you know, there's two others that are 35 feet or something. I don't know.
So we have some things to talk about and work on. Correspondence or board updates?
A board update that John has stepped down on.
Yes, yeah. Did he say anything at the last meeting, John?
Uh, no, it was pretty brief, he just said, you know, I've got a conflict, I'm commuting now, and it's just not a good fit, yeah.
His new work schedule couldn't...
Right. And we're sad to see him go.
Yeah, yeah.
And that means that we do have an opening for an associate member.
Yeah.
And then future agenda items, I guess we touched on what we'll be speaking about, so, unless anybody has anything else? Sarie, are you all set?
One thing I did want to explain on that velocity and elevation, the planning board really did discuss it quite a bit, and it was very hard for them to come up with a way to at least increase the height, and they looked at it several different ways, taking into consideration the houses, different things, and the different elevations, because you've got them from 12 feet to 22 feet, and this is the best that they thought would work for the overall, I thought it was just gonna be velocity zone, it is also AE, which I'm shocked at.
So that means somebody could be at a 12-foot elevation and then have a house up to 40 feet as of right? All right, well, that's for the town meeting to vote on, I suppose.
Right, and your town meeting member's right there, and I think he heard everything.
Are you vocal at town meeting?
No, I'm not vocal, actually, I hate speaking at town meetings, I do, that would be very, I get...
A lot of people.
All those very eloquent people like Joe Neto, you know, that's like...
You're on TV.
He's very eloquent.
He is very eloquent.
I don't mind if he hears me say that, hi, Joe.
Okay, so we'll call it a night.